At this time, I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission meeting of September 13th, 2021. For viewers watching at home, commissioners and members of the public are participating via tele- video conference or teleconference. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Sorry, it's a little distracting to have everybody speaking at different rates on my screen. Uh, will the secretary please call roll?
Commissioner Lanson?
President.
Commissioner Link?
Present.
Commissioner McMahon?
Present.
Commissioner Newman?
Present.
Chair Bass?
Present. Uh, tonight we have with us Planning Division Manager Gary Finley. Ms. Finley, are there any written comments, announcements, or continuances at this time?
Good evening, Chair Bass. There are no supplemental packets, medals, or additional announcements concerning tonight's agenda items. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, this would be the slot for public comments. Secretary Gore, do we have any public comments this evening?
There are no public comments.
All right, moving on. Uh, next we have the consent calendar with the minutes of July 26, 2021. Do any of my fellow commissioners have any comments or a motion to approve the minutes?
I would move to approve the minutes.
All right, will the secretary please prepare us for a vote?
Commissioner Lanson?
Aye.
Commissioner Link?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Aye.
Chair Bass?
Aye.
Hearing having been advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider Agenda Item 7A, Special Use Permit S U P 2021-70221 to allow the operation of an indoor electric go-kart racing establishment with onsite sale and consumption of alcoholic beverages at an existing industrial building located at 770 Lawrence Drive. The applicant is K1 Speed Incorporated.
Thank you, and presenting on behalf of staff, Ms. Finley, would you like to make the introduction?
Yes, thank you. Um, with us this evening, we have Senior Planner Lori Young, who will be presenting this item.
Hi, good evening, um, Chair and members of the Planning Commission. Um, I'd like to ask Carlos to, if he could start the PowerPoint.
I sure can. I'll, um, share the PowerPoint right now. It just asked me to, um, change the slides as we go through. Is the PowerPoint ready? I believe it's ready to go.
Okay, um. Hold on, I'm having a little difficulty. Okay.
Uh, Lori, if you're having difficulty, I could make the presentation if you'd like me to. If you can't see the images.
Uh, hold on one second. Um, I'm sorry, everybody. I'm trying to get on the, uh. Okay, Carlos, maybe you should do it because I can't get back on this Zoom.
I got it. No worries. Okay, well, thank you very much, um, commissioners, members of the public. Uh, the project before you tonight is a special use permit for a indoor go-kart facility at 770 Lawrence Drive. Uh, the applicant is K1 Racing. As far as the, uh, special use permit request goes, um, again, it's, it's a, it's a request to operate an indoor electric go-kart racing establishment, and it also includes, um, an onsite sale and consumption of beer and wine. As far as the Planning Commission review tonight, um, the project is before the Planning Commission, um, because in the M1 zone, an S U P is required for a recreational facility. In order for the Planning Commission to approve the project, um, the Planning Commission has to, um, uh, make the findings that the, that the proposed project is consistent with the general plan, that it complies with the laws and regulations and policies of Thousand Oaks. The proposed project will not be detrimental to public health, safety, and welfare, um, that the proposed use will be compatible with uses in the vicinity of the project site, and that the project conforms with the California Environmental Quality Act. As far as the project setting, um, again, the project is located on Lawrence Drive and just south of Teller Road. Um, as indicated here in the, in the red rectangle, uh, you have, um, industrial uses surrounding the property in the Rancho Canejo specific plant area. Again, the project is zoned M1, and S U P is required for this proposed recreational facility use with alcohol sales. Uh, the proposed, um, project will be located within an existing industrial building totaling fifty thousand five hundred and eighteen square feet in the area. Here's the site plan of the, uh, project site. You have Lawrence Drive along the western portion of the site. You have two points of access to this, uh, subject property, one along the southern portion and one along the northern portion of the site. As you can see here, um, there's parking a- around the perimeter of the facility. Um, there's existing improvements on the property, uh, parking lot area, hardscaping and landscape is already existing on the site, and you have the entrance to the buil- uh, building along the southern portion of that building, uh, which is again fifty thousand five hundred and eighteen square feet in the area.
Carlos, I'm back.
Okay, uh, I, I can continue with the presentation if you'd like me to, or I'll let you take it on from here.
I can go on from here.
Got it.
Sorry about that, commissioners. Um, here's the floor plan of the K1 Speed. Um, seventy-five percent of the floor area is their racing track, and the other twelve thousand square feet, the twenty-five percent of the floor area, uh, is devoted to the other ancillary uses like the, uh, reception lobby. They have a meeting room for parties and, um, and group events. There's also, uh, an arcade, game room, and, um, cafe and concession stand where you can get food and drinks. Um, and there's also a, a, uh, K1 store that they have in the corner here. Okay, Carlos? Um, I think we've, okay, you could go to the next one. A maximum of fourteen karts can race at one time. These are single-person electric karts. They're very quiet, and they don't emit any odors or fumes. Um, drivers are harnessed in by staff, and everyone must wear a helmet. Um, the karts, uh, can be programmed to accommodate different, um, skills for the drivers. Um, the operating hours are Monday through Thursday, twelve PM to ten PM, uh, Friday, twelve PM to twelve midnight, Saturday, ten AM to twelve AM, and Sunday, ten AM to ten PM. Uh, the peak hours for K1 is, uh, Saturday afternoons from three to eight PM. Okay, change, please? Uh, the parking calculation for this use is, was based on the maximum number of karts. So that was fourteen. The maximum number of employees they have on the largest ship, which is also fourteen. And then, um, the general commercial parking ratio was applied to the twelve thousand square feet, um, and at a ratio of one space per two hundred and fifty square feet. Uh, based on this analysis, uh, the site will have a surplus of thirty parking spaces. Um, there's a total of a hundred and six parking spaces, and according to the analysis, seventy-six spaces would be required. The applicant had, um, undertaken a customer count at their Carlsbad, uh, facility, which is similar in demographics to Thousand Oaks, and they had showed that even at peak times, there was never more than thirty-one customers in the facility at one time. Next, please? Um, a part of the S U P request is, um, they're asking if they can sell, um, and consume beer and wine on the premises. Uh, K1 Speed, um, absolutely prohibits any drinking prior to driving the go-karts. Um, alcohol consumption is, uh, only permitted after racing for the day is completed. All the beer and wine must be bought and consumed in the cafe. Um, conditions have been included to, um, which are being suggested to limit alcoholic consumption to the cafe and to promote, uh, prohibit loitering or drinking outside of the building. Uh, the police department has also included conditions. They've reviewed the, uh, request, um, and are, is requiring that the alcoholic beverages be served in conjunction with food service. The applicant still must obtain all necessary license from, uh, Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control. This, um, shows a picture of the, uh, site and building as viewed from Lawrence Drive on the southern driveway looking east. And the second photo is, um, the, another shot of K1 where you, where the entrance will be, which is in the middle there of the building, right there. This project, um, qualified as a Class One categorical exemption, um, which deals with the minor alteration of any existing structures, um, or negligible or no expansion of any use. In conclusion, this use is permitted in the M1 zone with a special use permit. Uh, the project meets all city standards and codes, including parking. We found the use is compatible with the surrounding industrial uses. Uh, there are no, uh, residential anywhere near this building. Conditions have been included to address any potential alcohol or operational, um, issues, and staff, um, does not feel that this use would be detrimental to any public health, safety, or welfare, of the public. So it's staff's recommendation, um, that the Planning Commission approve S U P 2021-70221 to allow an indoor go-kart facility, um, in addition to the onsite sale and consumption of alcoholic beverages based on the findings and subject to the conditions in the draft resolution. Um, that concludes our remarks, and, um, I'm available to answer any questions you have.
Thank you very much for your presentation, Senior Planner Young. Uh, are there any questions from my fellow commissioners? Uh, Commissioner McMahon?
Uh, I just have one question. Um, uh, the go-karts are electric powered. Does the building have solar power now, or are they going to put solar power in to make this, uh, uh, better, a more green project?
Uh, there's no solar power right now, um, and I don't know if they're planning to add it in the future. You would have to ask the applicant.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner McMahon. Uh, Commissioner Newman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Ms. Young and Mr. Contreras for your presentation. I'm just forwarding a comment that was made when I posted, uh, notice of this hearing. Someone observed that signs were already up, and the person was asking if the business was already in operation. Um, it seemed to me, when I saw it, it's under construction. Um, so I guess the two questions out of this are, one, is the signage, does the signage comply with, with city regulations? And two, um, that's okay, isn't it, to put up a sign before, um, a, a business opens or, uh, before approval of the application?
That's correct. Um, the burden would be on them if they didn't get this S U P approved.
Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Um, Commissioner Newman, if I could just add to that, um, yeah, the applicant can submit for a tenant improvement plan or a sign permit separate of the S U P, um, application. Um, again, that's at the risk of the applicant if they want to do that ahead of their special use permit. But it's definitely a, um, a tenant improvement or a sign permit would be a, uh, over-the-counter approval typically.
Right, right, but the act of putting up a sign in and of itself is not a violation?
No.
It is not, no.
Right, operate, operating without permit approval would be a problem, right?
That is, that is correct.
But that's, that's not the situation here.
Correct.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Newman. Uh, Commissioner Link?
Thank you, Chair Bass. Uh, I noted a discrepancy between the staff report and the project description that was submitted by the applicant. They mentioned that they were having a maximum of twelve karts on the track versus the fourteen in the staff report and the parking study. Uh, which is correct.
It's fourteen.
It is fourteen, okay.
Yes.
I mean, neither here nor there, I just wanted to make sure that we crossed our Ts and dotted our Is. The only other question is for my own, um, edification, I suppose, but, uh, does MB2 allow alcohol sales?
Uh, they do not request alcohol sales.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Link. Commissioner Lanson?
Thank you, Chair Bass, and, uh, thank you, Ms. Young, for the, the report. I just have a few questions as well, and, uh, Mr. Link just had my, uh, asked my first one. Um, was there any response, uh, at all, uh, to the local neighbors or any of the public? Again, it doesn't look like there was any response you guys received at all, correct?
Correct. We did not receive any kind of comments or any responses at all.
Okay, and to your knowledge, um, all the conditions that we've provided in the staff report and specifically the one about alcohol, is the applicant, to your knowledge, are they agreeable to all of those conditions?
Um, I think the applicant might want to bring something up, but, um, as far as, you know, when this went to print, this is what we have, so.
Okay, and one last one, kind of the same thing as Commissioner Link did for my own edification. Um, I know this is not necessarily our purview, but do we do any kind of ADA evaluation, or is that something that we don't even get into?
Um, building looks at it when we do the tenant improvements.
And that's just for bathrooms and parking spaces, or is there anything else that goes into that?
Bathrooms and parking spaces. They'll look at the site.
Okay, and, um, last, I have some other questions for applicant I'll ask then, so that's all I have, thank you.
And, uh, thank you, Commissioner Lanson. I do have a couple of questions, um, just from my understanding. I'm not sure if you'll be able to answer those, Ms. Young or, uh, Mr. Hay here. Um, my understanding is, is that, um, ABC is responsible for permitting alcohol use. So how does this fall under our purview exactly? Like, what are we approving?
We're approving, um, the entitlement to allow them to, um, sell and consume alcohol. But then they would still need to get approval from ABC. For the actual licenses.
I guess my, my bigger question would be to, to Mr. Hay here. Is, is our call on this based upon any legal standings that, uh, we are, uh, uh, on? Or is this basically just our opinion?
So, uh, this is where, because it's a S U P, you're, you're trying to see, would the alcohol use in any way kind of impact the neighborhood, right? So it's an allowed use in the area, but sometimes because it's a special use, you say, sure, you can have this use, but is it going to disrupt the neighborhood? A lot of times what we do is we look at, uh, is it close to residential, right? So we look at like live entertainment, alcohol use, because sometimes those uses create more noise or, or longer evenings, et cetera. And so you, you want to ask, is it appropriate in this area based on all the information that we have, all the evidence that we have? That is why it's a special use permit. So you were correct, there's two prongs. One, they have to get approval from this body or city council if it goes to that direction, where they say, we think this is an appropriate use, and we should have alcohol, uh, sales, uh, and consumption on our property, and here's why. And if you agree with that for this particular use, because it's, it's restricted to this particular one, that's why it's a special use permit only, then, then you, you approve that and they move on. They still, of course, have to get, um, uh, they have to get the ABC license, right? And so they have to go through those protocols as well. And sometimes we work with ABC when we have it, you know, we have an issue, sometimes pops up. It's usually about the site plan, for example, where the, um, restaurant might be in comparison to bathrooms or something of that nature. Uh, sometimes there's a little fencing involved, uh, where you ensure that whoever's drinking alcohol on the site is going to be, uh, quartered off to a certain area so you don't worry about, uh, minors getting, um, access to alcohol. Things of that nature kind of are reviewed by ABC and through the building official as well sometimes. So there are two different requirements here in this space.
I guess I'll ask you directly my question, um, the, uh, Mr. Hay here. Does it make sense for us to open a racing facility in an industrial area that's lowly, uh, not, not heavily populated? That allow people to race there, then consume alcohol, then put them in their cars in an area that doesn't have a lot of street traffic? Does that make sense? Because my, my, the logical conclusion would be, some people might bring their little race, uh, you know, moment home with them and try to use our empty streets in that industrial area as a place to settle scores in, uh, that, that weren't settled on the racetrack. And that, that would be my question. Does that, does that fall under my purview or no?
Well, I mean, certainly that question you, you have a right to ask. I think that what you have to consider then is, when you have a restaurant, any type of location that, that allows alcohol, right? You have to say, are the people that are going to use it, are they going to be responsible? We all understand the rules about drinking and driving, and certainly, uh, that's a serious matter that we take, right? So whether it's a restaurant with, uh, with, uh, go-karts, or whether it's a place that has, uh, entertainment, whether it's a place that, um, uh, is like a winery of some kind, all those places that allow that use.
This is a little bit different. We're actually putting people in racing vehicles, giving them alcohol, and then putting them in their vehicles. So, um, my question is, is did the city do any due diligence research on the other facilities they have? How many of them have alcohol use, if there have been any incidents? Because they do have fifty-five, I believe, facilities in sixteen states. So if they've had no incidents and they all serve alcohol, then it's a moot point. But I'm, I'm just curious, how much research do we do? Because I, I am giving my opinion on hypotheticals, doesn't make a lot of sense there if this is in my purview. But if it's not in my purview, then it's not my purview.
So you can ask the planner, Ms. Ms. Young, if she did that, actually. I would just say that, um, again, when it comes to alcohol use, we're, we're going to, I, I just would say that for any alcohol use, no matter what facility is, there's a responsibility for both the bartender or the people who are serving alcohol and the consumer, that they are not going to be in a position where they're dri- driving under the influence, right? That is the responsibility, um, so they have to be wary of that. So whether it's because of the, the racing go-karts and they're going to drive afterwards or not, it's, it's about having a celebration, whether they came here and they went to another location and had it, you know, you go to a pizza parlor after a game or some kind, for example, softball is a perfect example. Uh, we would meet afterwards and have a beer. Um, that is something in which we're going to take responsibility for our actions after we leave, right? We're not going to be drinking and driving.
Copy that. So then I will, I'll form my question to, to Ms. Young. Um, have we done any, uh, homework on the other fifty-five facilities they have open? And are we aware of any incidents, uh, involving alcohol?
Um, I, I looked online and looked at, you know, all the different places they are, where they have it. They have, um, many in California, and, um, the applicant said that they haven't had any problems, um, with, you know, people drinking and then going in their car and leaving and, you know, having any accidents or anything.
Um, so you verified that with the applicant or with the cities that these locations are in?
No, I didn't call any cities in particular. Um, I looked on the internet, see if there was any stories about, you know, anything that came up with K1 Speed. Um, but I didn't personally call all fifty-five cities. No, I didn't call them.
Okay, did you call any?
No, I just looked on their website.
So we don't know. Okay.
But.
Commissioner Bass, if, if I can just add that, um, what staff did was just, um, what we did as our research was to look at other facilities and, uh, look at their alcohol operations as they were proposed for City of Thousand Oaks, um, and just reviewed them based on their, um, website online. And just review them based on their website online, but we did not contact the cities that were located in directly as far as the alcohol operations go. That is because we routed the project over to the police department, who also applied conditions of approval to ensure that the operations are going to be in compliance with, with cities' codes and regulations. But that's as far as our research went, was just to look at the online facilities and the menu and the type of alcohol that is typically served at the, at the subject site.
Also, I'd like to add, we thought that this was, this use is really, the primary activity is the driving of the, of the go-karts and you know, I think the, the serving of food and, and alcohol and beverages is sort of like the accessory use to that. You wouldn't go there. It's not like a bar, you know, go there and drink. Or maybe even, I don't know, a restaurant, maybe where you'd stay a long time, have a bottle of wine or something.
Just to make everybody aware, I have lost my feed. I can hear you, but I cannot see you. So I'm not sure how to proceed from here. In the Zoom meeting, I could try to disconnect and reconnect, but I probably need a five minute break. Is that okay with everybody?
Sure.
All right. Thank you.
Yes.
I'm gonna try to.
If you can hear us, and I would just say, I advise that we just take a five minute break and see if we can get back on with the live feed and that's, you can hear us, but you still can't operate the meeting, then we can have the vice chair operate the meeting with you listening.
You got it. Actually, I can still hear you, so I can turn it over to Commissioner Newman, if we'd like.
Yeah, I'm, I'm here if you need me to, to do that.
Commissioner Newman, if you'd like to take over.
Okay, thanks. I need some prompting from staff since I don't have the
So if there's I just would say, if there's any more questions, and I think the next section is going to be asked applicant to.
Yes, what we do at this point is, let's go forward to the, we go to the applicant's representative. The applicant's representative is Paul Klukas. He's a planning consultant for K-1 Speed. And Paul Klukas, you will have 15 minutes to speak.
Okay, very good. Can you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, good evening, Chairman and members of the commission. I'm Paul Klukas. I'm a planner with Planning Systems. Our office is in Carlsbad at 1530 Faraday Avenue, Suite 100 in, in Carlsbad. We're happy to be up in, in, in Thousand Oaks. I'm here this evening representing K-1 Speed. K-1 Speed is a privately owned company, which owns and operates, as, as was mentioned, some 55 indoor karting centers throughout 16 states across the country. And they're now even expanding internationally. Some of you may be familiar with K-1 Speed. There are a number of them throughout Southern California. The company was founded by Mr. David Danglar. He really is a true entrepreneur. He came to this country from his native France years ago with, with no money in his pockets. And he's now built K-1 Speed to a mega million dollar indoor entertainment enterprise. The first K-1 Speed was opened in Carlsbad in 2004. I processed that first, they call it a conditional use permit in Carlsbad. And I've been involved with all of them, all 55 of them since. So now I just discovered that I have now been associated with K-1 Speed as a planning consultant for over 17 years. K-1 Speed, in terms of what they look for, they look for modern buildings on properties and upscale industrial parks in upscale cities. Because a high percentage of their customer base is corporate and technology groups. Their business model is not children's entertainment. Over 70% of their patrons and customers are adults. Corporate groups use K-1 Speed primarily for corporate events that they have, including like team building, departmental challenges, holiday parties, product lunches, et cetera. In addition to carts and a track, your standard K-1 Speed center has meeting rooms where corporations and businesses can hold meetings, have business luncheons, luncheons, have sales meetings as necessary, and then go out and have their entertainment event and blow off some steam in some racing competition on the track. And as mentioned in your, the staff report by, by your planning department, K-1 Speed clients are also people in the general public. And they're, it's not unusual for them to have private birthday parties, anniversary, or, or holiday parties there. So K-1 Speed will provide a service that's very complimentary to your beautiful Rancho Panamá Business Park and the surrounding industrial businesses and the citizens of your community. Now, K-1 Speed, as mentioned in your staff report, is environmentally friendly use. The carts are, they're fully electric carts. They create zero emissions. They create virtually no noise, no traffic to speak of, no odors, no parking problems, and generally no overall environmental impacts. Traffic to a K-1 Speed is typically off-peak, so it doesn't contribute to peak traffic congestion in your industrial area. We've never had a complaint from a neighboring business regarding our use. The staff report does a good job of summarizing all the aspects of the operation of our use. We've reviewed and we agree with the staff report and the draft conditions of approval that your staff has put together. All operations are going to be conducted within the building. There's sufficient parking on the site for the use. The use is going to be compatible with the neighbors. The eating and drinking are really a secondary use, as Ms. Young was, I was mentioning, to the karting. We've had no issues with drinking and driving. We limit to two beers or glasses of wine. We've had no incidents. Absolutely no kart racing is, is allowed after having a beer. That's, 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 that's a, a policy throughout the country. Virtually all of their, all of their K-1 Speeds have, have got beer and wine licenses, no alcohol, just, just a beer and wine. So we, you know, we agree with the conditions of approval. I believe Mr. David Danglar, the president of K-1 Speed, is attending this hearing and he's available on Zoom or on the telephone to answer questions of him if you have him. If I can't answer him, he knows the day-to-day operations better than I do. Also, I think that Drew Percival, K-1 Speed's director of operations, is also available on the computer or on the phone. So between the three of us, we, we can answer your questions. And on behalf of the applicant, we request you approve SUP 2021-70221 based on the findings and subject to the conditions provided by your staff and approve the special use permit for K-1 Speed. I'm happy to answer any questions.
You got it. Thank you very much, Mr. Klukas. That was a very informative presentation. Do any of my fellow commissioners have questions? Vice Chair Newman, please. Go ahead, none of them. Yes.
I'm muted myself, sorry. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Klukas, for your presentation. On the staff report, it mentioned that some of your operations are franchises and some are company-owned. Which, which is this business to be?
This will be company-owned.
Company-owned, very good. Thank you. And can you walk us through your process of, of how staff goes about preventing patrons from having a beer or having alcohol? Before going onto the track?
Yes, when you first enter the facility, anybody that enters the facility, you will go immediately to register at a computer. There's a series of four computers there, whatever. As you come in the door, everybody that comes in the door registers. And at the same time, they get a wristband, which is put around their, their, their wrist. And, and as long as they've got that wristband on, they can race. They get in line to race and do their thing. When they go, if they go to the Paddock Lounge Cafe, which is the internal cafe that does serve the beer and wine, if they order a glass of beer, it gets cut off, or, or wine, it gets cut off. And once it's cut off, you can't race anymore. So the managers of the, of, of the race is basically a foreman of the race. He determines, you know, who goes in each race. If you don't have a wristband on, then you, then you cannot race. And then, and, and, and the people that serve the beer and wine at the concession stand at the Paddock Lounge Restaurant, they, they, they ensure that no more than two drinks per person. So they, it, it's worked very well. It sounds relatively complex, and at first I was you know, wondering whether it was going to be successful, but it's worked throughout the country. They do it in everyone. Some cities, it, it does, it's, it's a, it seems to be a bigger issue, the fact that there's karting going on at the same time as, as, as drinking a beer. But with this program, it's, it's just, it's worked, it's worked well. We've had, if you, if, if Ms. Young had called these other cities, there's, we've got other cities that are fairly close by. We've got Anaheim. We've got Torrance. There, there are several of them in the, in the Los Angeles area. And we, we just never had any problems with people going out and wanting to race their cars afterwards or any of those things. And frankly, Mr. Danglar, they, they just run, they run a very tight ship. And it's, it's, it, it, it's a, it's a, it's a nice program and it's successful.
All right. Thank you very much. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair Newman. Commissioner Lanson.
Thank you, Chair Newman, and thank you, Mr. Klukas, for going through the issues. I appreciate it. Commissioner Newman went through my first question, so I'll jump to my second question, which is actually, second and third are kind of two natural disaster type issues, just to make sure I understand and you understand how things happen. As you may know, Edison is coming by lots and doing the different things with power, and sometimes power gets shut off without any of us knowing on a moment's notice. Since these are electric vehicles, what is the effect if all of a sudden Edison shuts down the power to the building?
Well, eventually we would run out of juice in our batteries, but these are battery powered, so they get charged after they're raced. They get, they get recharged. I don't, I don't personally know, you know, how many, how many races a battery can, can do. But, so eventually the batteries would run down and, and that we would, we would be shut down, I presume.
So, so just so I understand, the actual cars themselves don't just stop. If the power goes out, they continue to have electric, electric power until that battery runs out?
Yes, that's correct.
Does anything happen in the facility that would all of a sudden impede the driver's ability to continue on with their lap?
Well, that's a, that's a new question. I, I, I you know, I would honestly, I would have to defer to, to, to David or Drew. I see that they are on there.
Well, I mean, and again, it just, it sounds like you said that my concern was that the cars all of a sudden would just come to an automatic stop.
That's not going to hap, that's not going to happen.
And I would, my concern is.
The batteries would continue, just like a flashlight, the batteries would continue, would continue on until they ran out.
And, and again, my major con, not concern, but, but focus was just to make sure somebody wasn't locked in the, the electric car with the inability to get it off to the extent that power was.
No, that would not happen.
Okay, that's, that was my main focus. It sounds like, again, as long as there's nothing, obviously the lights may go out, but again, to the extent that there's, is there any auxiliary power or any other power source?
I'm, I'm not aware. I'm not aware that there is. I, I don't know.
The second question is, and again, don't know if you looked at necessarily the specifics of Ventura County's COVID requirements, but are, is there any specific COVID rules that you are going to implement to make sure that, or first of all, is K-1 in agreement to comply with the Ventura County COVID rules?
Well, yes, the answer is definitely yes to that question. But I think I would have to defer to Drew or to David about the COVID rules. I'm not that familiar with, with the specifics. I do know that they have an overall fairly involved policy on, on COVID that addresses all of those governmental issues and safety issues. So it's, you know, if you wanted, we could, we could have either David or Drew perhaps respond a little more detail to that.
Be glad to hear from them.
Darren or Drew able to unmute themselves, or do we need to do that for them?
Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Yeah. Drew Percival, K-1 Speed Director of Operations.
So Drew, the question was, if you have any kind of COVID protocols, first of all, are you in agreement with the Ventura County COVID rules? And then specifically, is there any COVID protocol rules that you'll be using?
Drew?
I think we may have lost Drew.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Drew, we, we could hear you. If you can hear us, go ahead. I feel like I'm the Verizon here right now.
Yeah, I think, I think Drew's gone again.
I can, I'll call on my phone. Me in just a moment.
Okay.
Mr. Danglar, are you available to answer that question? I apologize to everybody watching at home. This is the joys of Zoom meetings.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay, hi. Hello, everyone. Yeah, I can answer with the rules, of course. I mean, we, each state, each cities are different requirements, as you could see throughout the country, but lately LA County has imposed that anyone indoor wears masks. And so we impose that at this time. The rules have been more lax lately than they used to be, obviously a year ago. But we follow all the guidelines and be extremely careful with what these are. So at this point, LA County requirements are asking for the wear of mask, and we do so. We impose that.
So in, in your, I'm assuming the area where the, the restaurant and drinking would be, you, you're agreeable with the Ventura County has the same rule in terms of indoor mask mandate? You, you, you run the place according to those rules? You'd have no problem with that?
Exactly, yes. That's what we do daily, yes.
Okay, and then again, have, have you looked at the Ventura County rules in regard to the COVID requirements?
We looked at them, but they, they change often, so when we know, we have no operation, obviously, we don't know what was the rule last week. But we're going to make sure we look at them before we open our doors.
And, and what you're saying is, 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 is true, and the difficulty is, there's lots of different businesses that obviously have to change. My, my concern is just to make sure at some point we don't get into a situation with the county where all of a sudden you thought a different rule, set of rules were in place in terms of how to deal with COVID. I just wanted to make sure you acknowledged that you saw those and are agreeable to complying with the terms of whatever Ventura County requires as to COVID rules, just to make sure that we're all on the same page.
Oh, yes, 100%. And number one is the priority, it's our priority for on-staff and also patrons. So we follow the rules per county.
That was my last question, Chair Buss.
Thank you, Commissioner Lanson. Do any of my other commissioners, Commissioner McMahon?
Yes, I would like to address the solar power question to you. It seems that if that's the power of your product, I'm wondering if you've ever thought about that, if the cost is too prohibitive or, or where you stand on that?
This is David again. So I'll answer to that. I'm very interested in the solar power system. In fact, it's probably something that I look into. The, the cost of power is rising, but also the question that was asked earlier about what happened if we ran out of power and the carts run. Yes, the cart will run, but probably for another 15 minutes, maybe 20 at top. So at this point, we could be closed for business for the rest of the day if we lose power. So adding solar would actually be self-sufficient and be able to operate the business and be even more green. We do have a new site that's opening. It's an outdoor facility, but it's a first of its kind with the e-cart outdoor. Because we like to be the pioneer of electric. We were the pioneer indoor electric in 2003. But this is going to be the first e-cart outdoor, and it's running on solar fully. So it shows you that we are committed to the solar. This site under built right now is having full solar. And I would love to have it in the Sea of Thousand Oaks as well. For a couple of reasons, I think it goes well with what we believe in, but also we would save a great amount of money.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Any other questions, Commissioner McMahon?
I'm done. Thank you.
You're done. Where's their leg? Do you have any questions, sir?
No, no questions. I did want to mention, though, that the site does happen to be right behind the new fire station for Ventura County Fire, so response time should be fairly quick if anything does happen.
Excellent. I will follow up with the same question for Mr. Kuklis. I believe you answered it pretty succinctly, though. You said that they cap all alcohol consumption at two beverages per customer?
That's correct.
You got it. I think that answers my question. So I will move along. Now we can go to public comments. Secretary Gore, do we have any public speakers?
No, there are no public speakers.
All right, so we're going to go back to staff for follow up comments. Leonard Young?
Yes, I don't have anything else to add unless anybody has any other questions.
I do, Chair, Chair Bus, excuse me. Couple of things that just to bring up. One is Commissioner Lanson brought up the COVID regulations, and in one of our conditions, condition number seven, we do require that they comply with local agency regulations, including state and federal, but local agency, including COVID nineteen regulations. So that is in there as a condition. I will bring up one other issue just because it came up late tonight or late this afternoon. And I would like to have it addressed in case maybe someone's either forgot it. I just want to make sure we're clear about the conditions. And one of them was on condition number twenty three. And it was raised by, I believe, applicant about modifying condition number twenty three regarding allowing alcohol in the in that extra extra community room that they have for meetings. And I just want to get clarity tonight from the applicant if they're requesting that to have that brought up because we don't want to have it approved today, and then we have to modify a condition that wasn't that we could have addressed tonight. And so I would just bring that up, Chair, just because it might be something for the applicant before we close the hearing to address, are they good with condition number twenty three as is as written by Ms. Young? Or do they need to request a modification of twenty three to allow alcohol use in that larger banquet room or, you know, meeting room, if you will?
I'll be that. Mr. A here. Thank you for that. Mr. Kuklis, are you requesting a change to that condition?
Well, it was our our thought that 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 the interpretation of this condition was to was that 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 the beer and wine could be could be served in the paddock lounge and also in the meeting room for the parties, because both of those are the two areas that are going to be having food.
All right, let me let me check in with Senior Planner Young. Senior Planner Young, is that your understanding of the way it's written?
It doesn't. Well, in the staff report, we specifically said it that the alcohol was going to be consumed in the cafe area, the six hundred square feet. I think it's, I spoke to police department. They're they're okay with this. You know, allowing the participants to drink in the meeting room. And
That makes sense. All right, then I will.
Yeah.
Let's rotate over to Mr. A here again. Sounds like both the city and the applicant are in agreement that that's okay.
Right. So what I would say is
Do you have something written?
Sure. So go ahead. I think the applicant might want to say something, or we just be
That was Commissioner Newman. I just wanted to jump in here to say, and maybe you were just about to say to propose a change to the language? Because as I read the condition currently, it does restrict alcohol consumption to the concession area.
Correct. Yes, we're all in agreement on that. That's why I just want to make sure both the applicant and the city were in agreement to making a change on that. And then I want, I assume Mr. Ray here is making a change, but
Sure.
I will stop for one second because Commissioner McMahon's got her hand up.
I hate to interrupt. It's a very minor question, but it just kind of popped into my head, and it doesn't relate to this at all. Just a quick question. How young, how old are the drivers? How how old do you have to be to be a driver of one of your go-karts?
I can answer to that if you want, Paul. They start, it's a it's a height requirement for the juniors. We start at forty eight inches. Usually, it's a six year old, maybe seven. So a junior league or racing are seven to about eleven. And then teens are using the the bigger carts after that, all the way to corporate adults.
Thank you, and I am sorry to interrupt this other discussion. I'm sorry about that.
No worries. Commissioner Link wants to join in as well. Please, sir. Go ahead and unmute yourself, though.
You know, I clicked that button. Yeah, my apologies for the interruption again. Thank you, Chair Bus. So looking at the project site plan, what is delineated by the area that is considered the concession area? Is mostly what I'm seeing is either the track area and the non-track area. So what delineates the concessions area?
Staff?
Yep. Ms. Young?
What I'll do is, sorry, this is Carlos. I'll go ahead and go back to that floor plan slide so he can provide some discussion on it. And Lori can clarify as to what the what the floor plan demonstrates here.
Right. And it's a little hard to see. It's kind of obscured, but there's really not a delineation shown on this on the floor plan here of the six hundred square feet. And I had asked the applicant today about that. But I think ABC will also require some sort of barrier, physical barrier, or you know, demarcation where people can can drink, where their license is good for, where they can consume the alcohol. The applicant mentioned that they have signs that they put up, but I think it's, you know, appropriate if if there's some kind of like physical barrier that's placed around the cafe area. So you wouldn't have to guess where where this where the drinking area could be.
What we're really looking at here is so the concessions, as shown, is to the right of the reception area, which would be essentially the bar near the prep area, down in the sort of the middle right of the entrance, and then the meeting room is to the left of that.
Yes, Commissioner Link, if I can add the meeting room, it appears in the floor plan as provided by the applicant. It's a separate room with a separate entryway, right? So you enter the lobby area, you go to the right, and you get the reception concessions with the prep area. And then you have the meeting room to the left here, just about seven hundred square feet, and then the concessions area cafe is about six hundred square feet.
Okay, Planar Contreras, Mr. Kuklis, you have the floor, sir.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Yeah, just as long as we're on this floor plan. It looks like the the plan has been obscured just a little bit to identify, you know, the number of square foot square footage for each of these areas. But when you walk in the lobby and you go to the right, you go to the reception, that's where you have a person there, and you have your four computers there that you register. Now, the concession area is to the right of that. And that is the paddock lounge area. And underneath where it says twelve thousand square feet is where you have several tables and chairs, where the twelve thousand square foot number is. It says twelve thousand, yeah, square feet. And then the prep area behind the concession is where the food is made. And it's sold at the concession stand, and then you eat in the tables and chairs that are under the twelve thousand square foot area. So that's your paddock lounge area. Now, what what we're requesting, and if the condition needs to be, oh, that's good. If the condition needs to be modified in order to articulate this, maybe maybe that's worth doing. But the only other place that there would be some sales, sales of beer and wine would be in the meeting room, which is over to the left. And that's because that's where they have their business parties and and things like that. And 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 we felt that that was still consistent because the police department's condition reads that you can only have, you can only sell and consume beer and wine in locations where food is being served. And that makes sense to us. A lot of cities do it that way. And the meeting room is going to have, there are are waiter types that bring over the food to the meeting room as well. And so a meeting room is, in our opinion, an area that that has that serves both beer and wine and food. So we felt that that was consistent with the police department, and I did talk with Ms. Young today about that via email. And it sounds like the police department is in agreement with that, too. So if there is a condition that specifically says that we that that we cannot have beer and wine in the meeting room and only can have it over in the paddock lounge concession area, then we would request that that be changed to add that additional flexibility, which it sounds like the police, the police department is okay with as well. But if you look at condition number forty eight, which is the police department conditions, the second paragraph there says sale and service of alcoholic beverage shall be permitted only during normal business hours and only when food services also available. Well, we can certainly comply with that.
If I may, Chair Bus?
Yeah, so I was gonna say, after that, I'll come back to you, sir.
Sure. So I think we have two very simple correction, and it just goes back to the fact that you have two agencies, both the Planning Commission and Department of Alcohol Alcoholic Beverage Control involved. So ABC, when they review any type of application for license for beer and wine or for any of alcohol use, they're going to look at the site plan. They're going to look at how the applicant is requesting to serve alcohol in that space, right? How big is it? The areas, any concerns? And they're going to put their own conditions on those as well because their own knowledge and restrictions that they put on it. So for twenty three, to be just to be clear to everybody, to be clear to the applicant, to be clear to the commissioners, of course, but to be clear to the public as well, they've changed it simply that currently twenty three reads, the purchase and drinking of beer and wine shall be restricted to the concession area cafe of the facility. So we propose to have it as follows. The purchase and drinking of beer and wine shall be restricted to the concession area cafe and meeting room and no, and as further allowed by the California Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control of the, I'm sorry, let me repeat that again, because I just messed up really quick. The purchase and drinking of beer and wine shall be restricted to the concession area cafe and meeting room of the facility and as further allowed by the Department, the California Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control. So what we do there is we just add the meeting room to be clear that's those two areas. And then we have to put in as and as further allowed by, per the California Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control. And thank you, Mr. Contreras, for doing that.
Yeah, I just just for the commissioners, I just wanted to share the the conditions of approval, condition number twenty three as it reads, and I just modify it right now. If that's the way we can proceed with the project, I'll modify it and I'll provide it to our staff.
You got it. Yeah, I'm good with that. Can you end the screen sharing so I can see everybody? Thank you, sir. All right, I just want to go back to each of my commissioners and make sure that everybody's okay with that, or if anybody has any questions for their clarification. So Link's good. Mr. Newman's good. Mr. Lanson looks good. Commissioner McMahon, you good on that? All right, I think we are all happy. The applicant, I just want to review with you. Are you happy with that wording?
Yes, we're happy with that wording.
Okay, then I think we can go ahead and close the public hearing at this point. All right, I think we're good, and I will open up the floor for a motion and or discussion. Any of my fellow commissioners, ah, Commissioner Newman, Vice Chair Newman, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to, I say first that I approve of this project. I think it's terrific that it's electric, and I'm encouraged to hear the applicant voice openness to being a solar powered and self sustaining business. If not on day one, then hopefully sometime in the very near future. So with that, I will go ahead and move that we approve special use permit twenty twenty one seventy two two one based on the findings and conditions.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair Newman. Does anybody else have any comments? Ah, Commissioner McMahon?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I just want to make a comment that there are continual complaints from the young people in our community that there's nothing to do. And so this in my mind is something to do, so I'm in favor.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Lanson?
Thank you, Chair Bus. First of all, I want to say the applicant, again, I'm sorry you had to go through that. You obviously seem like we sometimes are going through lots of rules. It doesn't mean that we're not interested in the project, and thank you for coming and doing some some interesting work in our city. Very much appreciated. It's just that that's our job is to go through those things and kind of make sure we're asking the questions that, again, one hundred and twenty seven thousand people may have with regard to a project. With that said, I have an overall concept that we we need to start moving towards an experience based economy and trying to find ways to engage people in lots of different things. And this is, I think, a perfect example of that. It's, again, carbon neutral. It's everything I think we look at in terms of trying to find something interesting and creating that kind of experience based process. So I'm in favor of this, and again, thank you for bringing that great idea to our city.
Mr. Link, do you have any comments?
I noticed on the website that it says opening at the end of October, so I expect to hold you to that. I have I have no control over that. But no, I appreciate the project and and welcome.
Mr. Chair, if I may add one more comment?
Yes, you may, sir.
Thank you. I just want to follow up on a good question Commissioner McMahon asked about age and height requirements. Just to note that some very famous race car drivers, particularly in Formula One, started their careers in in go-karts. So who knows where this will go, but we're happy to have it here.
Thank you, sir. I will add my two cents just because a shout out to go-kart racing. I used to work on a go-kart that ran up in Saugus on the racetrack up there before that racetrack disappeared. Also, being a longtime resident of Ventura County, I remember when the only options we had to go racing was to go to the park and ride out of Las Pocas every third Saturday night. Shout out to anybody who remembers those. So I'm grateful that we have a place that is both safe and legal that we're looking at here for for people to engage in these activities. So I thank you guys for bringing this to our to our town. And with that, I will ask the Secretary of Affairs for a vote.
Commissioner Lanson?
Aye.
Commissioner Link?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Aye.
Chair Bus?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
All right. And then any agreed party who wishes to appeal the planning commission's decision may do so by filing an appeal with Community Development Department within ten days. Congratulations, gentlemen, and thank you so much for for bringing this to our town. All right, now we will move on. I believe there are no department reports. Am I correct? All right, and then I will go to commission comments and AB one, two, three reports. So now is the time for any commission comments or any AB one, two, three reports, one, two, three, four reports. Are there any comments from my fellow commissioners? I'll go to Commissioner Lanson, who is more ready than I was for this.
I just a quick comment to the public with regard to SB nine that's sitting on the governor's desk. I have a lot of questions with regard to that issue, and it is something that would change single family zoning. Again, recently, the city council approved a rezoning as part of the general plan update that would set aside ninety two percent of the city's area for single family homes. SB nine would modify that. By the way, more, we don't really have single family homes anymore in terms of the zoning because of the ADUs. But SB nine would specifically create a difference in terms of the ability to build various units. So that is something that would change again, from what the city has already put forth, which is why the city had a specific position letter that they sent against SB nine and SB ten as well for other reasons. So I would strongly suggest anybody that wants to know what the city's position on or on things, there's actually a webpage as part of the city website as to exactly what position the city is taking with regard to any legislative action if they're interested. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else have anything to say this evening? All right, then we'll go to staff update. Ms. Finley, are there any follow up items, announcements, and upcoming issues?
Yes, thank you, Chair Bus. I just wanted to mention that there are several Community Development Department items on the council agenda tomorrow evening. The council will consider two residential capacity pre-screens for properties located at fifty nine Moody Court, which is a four unit proposal, and also another one located at five fifteen East Thousand Oaks Boulevard, and that's a thirty six And that's a thirty-six unit project. Um, the city council is also being asked to weigh in on an applicant's request for phased development on the former, former Kaneho Valley School Site or the Timber School Site. Um, and staff is bringing that forward for their input on that. And then also they will consider approval of the consolidated annual performance and evaluation report. It's, we we call it the CAPR, um, which is an annual report and submit to the Department of Housing, um, and Urban Development, which is required to report on the use of CDBG funds in the city. Um, beyond that, I can report on the upcoming planning commission meeting.
That was going to be my next thing. I'll let you take it away.
All right, thank you. Um, so the next planning commission meeting is scheduled in two weeks on September twenty-seventh for review of the preliminary draft housing element update, which is one chapter of the general plan update, but, um, it is on a state mandated schedule. So it is moving ahead of the general plan update. No formal action is being requested by the planning commission at that, this next meeting. And the purpose of the item is to introduce the draft to the commission and the public and take comments prior to submitting it to the State Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD, for their mandatory review. Once, um, comments are received from HCD and, um, any required edits will be made. And then it will be posted and rescheduled for planning commission review and recommendation to city council later in the year. So I just want to emphasize that no new information is being presented in the draft housing element. The current housing element is listed, is, uh, on the city's website, and you can see it's generally the same. The content and chapters are there because they're all dictated by state law requirements. Um, we'll be updating the information in those. Um, it's also based on the extensive outreach and public comments received regarding housing and land use during the general plan update public outreach sessions, um, over the past two years. So, um, the other thing it's based on is this draft land use map that was, and, um, I have to say it was endorsed by the city council. It's not formally adopted yet, but we hope to get there fairly soon. Um, and that was just endorsed in May. So all the contents is based on all these things rolled up together and, um, based on state law requirements. So comments, however, comments are still going to be, um, will continue to be accepted prior to the planning commission review of the final draft later in the year. And that concludes my updates for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much, uh, Ms. Benley. Uh, right before we join, I just want to, uh, beseech anybody who happens to still be watching out there, uh, to please get vaccinated. Um, it is absolutely terrifying what's going on in this country as far as the spread. Uh, we've done a tremendous job in this county of keeping, uh, keeping it under wraps and keeping it from being a a true disaster. And, uh, it is all of you that is making that happen, so, uh, please mask up, vaccinate, and, uh, thank you all. Uh, this meeting is now adjourned to the next meeting, September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one at six P M. Thank you.
Everybody?
Good evening.